Yes, good. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular town council meeting of October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. If we could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Coos.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. Cheats.
Here.
Mayor LaFois.
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January third, two thousand and twenty five. All right, we have a couple of discussions this evening, some speakers to make some presentations.
I don't think we go out of order because Tom Ferry, super excited.
Oh, okay.
Elated to go over best practices real quick.
Oh, best practices. I thought fleet management. Okay, we're gonna do best practices. All right, let me go to that attachment. Mr. Ferry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so we completed the best practices inventory and we submitted it. It was due on the twenty fourth. Real quick, what is it? The twenty five inventory is assess each municipality's compliance with various laws and evaluates implementation of fiscal and operational best practices. The inventory also provides taxpayers additional means of evaluating their municipal performance. The inventory also identifies area where municipality may require further technical assistance. Furthering this objective, the inventory contains an unscored survey section, section soliciting information on various topics. A lot of CFOs hate this thing, but as an ex auditor, I thought it was really, I think it's good. And it's actually, it opened my eyes too when I had to do it myself.
I remember when.
Inventory asks various questions, ethics personnel, lead remediation, that's really big. Terry's really excited about that. Budget, share services, financial administration, capital projects, transparency, environmental procurement, emergency services, insurance, redevelopment, technology, and utilities. So it's, they're all over the place and they're basically yes, no, or perspective questions. This is the ninth year that they've had it out. Total questions in two thousand and eleven were fifty, total in twenty five were seventy, the high was eighty four in two thousand and nineteen. This year there were forty three point five possible points. Twenty, there was a certain amount that were unscored because they're just trying to focus our information. Out of forty three point five, we had a forty two point five.
Very nice. I think that's our highest score yet.
Well.
Isn't that our highest score yet?
I think we had like one or one and a half last year missing.
That's great.
But yeah, we're always up there and it was just, it was just one of the other ones that were new. Because we would have taken care of it. The other one, one of them was actually me, which I had his perspective. They asked about cash flow, which I never knew was a requirement of a CFO to do a cash flow analysis. So my answer was perspective. It's so, last week I already did a cash flow analysis that I presented to Tom for the current funding water utility, water and soil utility. So that's taken care of. So next year I'll answer yes. So anything prospective, you better answer yes next year. Or, you know, you get whacked for it. You needed to answer at least thirty, I needed to answer thirty two points. We had forty two, not to lose state aid. But the state aid payment that they base it on is the last one, which is five percent of our total. So five percent of our total state aid is forty nine thousand and change. So the most you could lose if you scored lower than a thirty two is like twenty four hundred bucks, but the fact is that you don't want to ever, ever do that. This year there were six unscored, like I've new scored, ten new unscored, and ten repeats for the, for this year. So that's basically all I had. I did it under five minutes, Tom.
No, I mean, no, it's great. And when you look at it, it's everything from budget to redevelopment to staff, to capital projects, ethics, you know, personnel procurement. So it, it takes the entire municipalities, all the departments' works in order to have best practices in place to be able to answer yes to the questions.
And everybody has to get involved. They have to walk around the municipal building or even, even technical, like they ask about how your, your servers are all hooked up and whether or not you have, you know, play things involved, you know, in place to make sure that nobody can get into the system. So it involves even our computer consultants too.
Yeah, that's great. That's, it's a good, good mark for the town. So congratulations, both Toms and the entire team, all our department heads. Great. Are we going to continue out of order?
No, so we will go back in order.
Okay.
So as you all know, we've been working diligently on the homeless population and the unhoused population here in the town and the county. So I asked our new friend, best friend, Michael Callahan from the Department of Community Affairs to come and give a presentation, which I know Helen and Matt have been privy to, but I wanted the rest of the council and the public to hear about the very interesting framework that was established under Michael's dutiful leadership. I've also asked Barry Drager, who's a friend of mine who I brought on board to assist with the population outreach and Jessica is doing a project of research in this regard. So I'll ask Michael and Barry to come up to the big people table here and we'll walk through Michael's presentation, which you will have a copy of and then Barry can weigh in on a few things. We'll see if the council has questions or comments, mayor, and maybe we'll open it to the public early in case Michael has.
Do we have, we have members of the public on? I would be interested.
Yeah, so just before we get started, I know that Matt and I have kind of teed this up over the last couple of council meetings for the rest of the council. So I'm grateful that Michael Callahan for DCA and Barry are here tonight along with Jessica. But there have been two meetings that Matt and I have attended that were kind of what I call an all hands meeting that present company was also in attendance, our police chief and others, town attorney, and that happened in the police department conference room that included the county, county health and human services, personnel, probably, anybody that should have been at the table has been at the table. And I know that there was an article that was posted the other day with comments from the commissioners with regards to their partnership with the town of Newton. And what I just want to underscore is that Newton really is taking the lead on this initiative. I mean, it's called the Newton Township Unsheltered Homelessness Resolution Sprint from DCA. That is the document that everybody is working towards that Michael's going to present on tonight. And while we all know that Jessica's office is also doing a study of which the county is paying half of that study, the day to day to work on the street is being done by the individuals that are in this room under Tom's leadership and as Tom has said to the council on several occasions, he's kind of taken it and made it his personal mission. All of us on the dais and, and the department heads and certainly the police department for the last several months on a daily basis have been interacting with residents, business owners, people from out of town. We've spent a lot of time on the phone, in the streets and businesses, talking about what is going on because of the, you know, keyboard warrior perception that nothing is happening in the town of Newton. And as I reported the last meeting a couple of Fridays ago, Barry and Kimberly and Sergeant Post was with us and we were walking around for well over two hours, going into every store on Spring Street, talking to staff and business owners, really engaging them in this partnership. As we've talked about, there's, this is not a one solution and done and all of a sudden there is no issue or perceived issue. And so I think what we're going to hear tonight is very comprehensive plan that is already in place and we've already seen unhoused individuals become sheltered over the last couple of weeks, based on the efforts of this team that Tom has put together. And so, you know, the other thing that we know is that not everyone who this summer was hanging out in the County Green Park was unhoused. We also know that there are multi, multifaceted issues that many of the individuals are face lit with that lead to their homelessness or their need for human services. And we also know that all the individuals that were enjoying the county park this summer were not Newton residents. So there was, you know, before any plan was put in place, I think there was a lot of due diligence that was done, a lot of conversations. Officer Bellis led a conversation that I was able to be a part of, of bringing together all of the nonprofit organizations. It was over at the offices for the Mental Health Associates just to hear about what they were hearing and seeing and the work that they were doing in an effort to bring together those human service organizations to kind of speak with one voice, possibly talk about coordinated community response and point of entry. And then that's where we have come and then in the crossroads with Michael Callahan and DCA. And I know that there's been a lot of press throughout the state with, in some of the other municipalities have been working with, with DCA. I think our process has been a little bit different, as it rightly should be because of just the difference of Sussex County and the town of Newton as per, as per the other counties throughout the state that have been working with your team. And so, you know, I just wanted to make a point, set this up, that there's been a lot of effort and a lot of work that's gone into it. And yes, we've had conversations with the commissioners and we've been keeping them up to date because we are the county seat and that is the right thing to do. But Newton has really taken the lead on this and I think is putting into place something that is going to be a model, not only for Newton and for Sussex County, but the other municipalities. And later in my report, you know, I'll mention Michelle and I had the opportunity to speak and attend an event earlier this week where there were a lot of other mayors present and we made the comment that the work that's being done here is ultimately going to be setting up a protocol that can be mirrored in other municipalities. Because from what we've heard, there's not one municipal government in the town that doesn't recognize that they have some unsheltered or homeless populations in their town as well. It just so happens that during the day they're coming to the county seat for the services that they're seeking or the assistance that they need. So just wanted to make that comment before Michael and Barry jump in, that there has been a lot of work done. And I think what you're going to be hearing tonight is a culmination of not only a lot of hard work, but a lot of hard work. And one of the things that I really, you know, Sergeant Post was saying to the business owners is that there is, you know, the Newton Police Department is a partner in the community and you don't just call us when things are bad. You know, lean on us as, as another set of eyes and a support system. And then Barry was saying to business owners that don't be afraid to reach out to the police department or to reach out to the town as a true partner, because by reaching out and sharing what's going on in front of your business or near your business or what's happening overnight at your business ultimately is actually helping the individuals that are involved, because then we can interact with them and find out what their needs truly are and do this work in a human centered way as opposed to a law enforcement way or a big brother government sort of way. So Matt, I don't know if there was anything that you wanted to add as we've been part of the conversations together.
I mean, I mean, pretty much summed it up. I think that it's just important to stress that, you know, the work that the town manager and the people he's brought in have really, you know, steered this course. I think he's been a driving force in this and I'm really proud of the, like you said, the human way that we're, we're handling this. And I think everybody's gonna really like to hear what Mr. Callahan has to say. So I'll just kick it to him.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. All right. So just to level set, my name is Mike Callahan. I'm the Director of the Office of Homelessness Prevention at the Department of Community Affairs. Right, um, and let me just, before we dive in, you know, really give the kudos to mayor, right, and deputy mayor, and also to Tom and the PD, right? If every engagement that my office does was as seamless as this one would be, right, the state would be in a better shape right now as far as homelessness response. And that is, that is no hyperbole, that is nothing of the sort, is very much the substantive and genuine engagement is what have led to some of the great outcomes that we have so far and also the quality of your professionals and your other teams. Right? So really appreciative of that. Tom, are we going to go through the deck as we go here or?
Yeah, you start.
Okay, great. So just a level set, right? The way that we do business here with the Office of Homelessness Prevention is we have four lines of business essentially, right? The first line of business is our data science team, right? So we are tasked by the governor's office to have all things data related to homelessness and housing insecurity in the state, right? The second part of our team and the majority of our budget, right, is our program shop, right? Our program shop manages three different teams, a grant portfolio and access of one hundred and sixty three million dollars. And through that, right, we touch everything from recidivism programs to make sure that people that are exiting carceral situations don't go, fall into homelessness to the comprehensive eviction, defense and diversion initiative. And part of that is making sure that folks that are facing evictions don't end up in a pipeline of homelessness, right? And anything that runs the continuum there. Our third line of business, right, is providing technical assistance to municipalities and county governments, right? And we come from a place of, this is, is, we come from a place of, it's not that you don't know how to do things. It's that sometimes at the state we can pull certain levers and force certain vendors to do certain things and to lever certain relationships to make them happen more quickly, right? And then lastly, right, we're also tasked with interagency coordination and part of those two last, last two lines of business really kind of blend here, right? And purposely, and you know, as the mayor said, working with the county government, ensuring that there's alignment between resources that might flow through DHS, right, to the Department of Human Services and the Division of Family Development and things like that to make sure that they're aligned in effort, both in spirit and intent with what we're doing here, right? So one of the things that will walk you through here with this deck, right, is we're going to give you kind of a high level overview, right, of, and so that everybody walks away with a shared understanding, right, of what exactly is happening and also to what are the roles and responsibilities through this, right? One thing is this is, we have set a very aggressive timeline, right? And much to Barry's credit here, right? He really leaned in as a, as a hockey player and I appreciate that. I never made it past hockey, leaving middle school. So, you know, I think it's that, I think it's that speaking of it, but importantly, this work takes grit. And importantly, is part of that grit is understanding that if you were going to be tasked with this, with the ownership of the resolution of people's homelessness that you need to follow through as you go and do so, right? We've set a ninety day sprint timeline, right? We are already ahead of that timeline. It looks like by about two weeks, right, to resolve and reach that end state. And similarly, right, you know, to the mayor's point earlier, from this, we really do have a nascent framework by which we can export to other municipalities across the county, right? So all being said, right, as the mayor said, this is a government to government initiative, right? So Newton Township is working with the Department of Community Affairs and it's also working with the county, right? And that is where resolving this issue is a function of municipal, state and county government, right? It's not nonprofits are doing this as charities work. It's no, there's professional responsibility and there's accountability the whole way, right? Similarly, what we're doing is distinct from what some people might understand as the continuum of care coordinated entry system, right? Is that system exists as a quasi governmental entity and we're doing this adjacent to that system, but not as replicated to it, right? Similarly, there's a results focused approach, right? We're not measuring success by the number of people that were housed, being housed, right? We're measuring success by not only the housing outcomes, but most importantly, right, the system change work that we're doing across, across all partners to ensure that once we hit that end state, right, that we can ratchet up and scale as needed in responsive to some of the changes that are coming, right? So go ahead, next slide, Tom, right? So originally, right, and through this, right, when the following, kind of the initial meeting that the mayor was alluding to and talking to, right? We work with your police department to identify the twenty two most high impact chronically unsheltered individuals that were experiencing homelessness, right? These folks were either living in small camps, under bridges or other infrastructure and abandoned buildings and wooded areas or their vehicles, right? Importantly, we worked with municipal, with our municipal partners, but also too with the PD to, and, and the business community to identify, okay, what are some concentrated areas that are going to have immediate impact? Where we can prioritize as we resolve these folks homelessness, right? That'll also have that second and third order effect of not only a perceived change, but more importantly, that there'll be increased business traffic and things like that from there, right? And then when we looked at all of these individuals, right, they had a lot of similarities, right? The first is many of them showed more than twenty one engagement or placement attempts since two thousand and twenty. For quite a few folks, there's repeated entry and exits, right, from county services and intensive case management programs and other engagement with other vendors. Similarly, when we looked at the preponderance, so six out of every ten cases had more than four years of system involvement, right? And so in doing so and being able to really work through what our population was, right, and understanding, understanding how we're going to have to resolve it, right? That really let us at the state deploy resources that were going to make sure that there was match there, right, for that market to help result that homelessness, right? So essentially, what all this is driving to is what's in the blue box there. So the community impact, right? So business owners, residents and law enforcement, right, that are reporting concerns, right, about safety, loitering and public intoxication, right? That the sprint simultaneously addresses those humanitarian needs, but also those community and economic needs, right? And we do compassionately to the largest extent possible, right? So we look at, so yeah, perfect, Tom, right? So when we look at the primary goal, right, the primary goal of this is to secure permanent housing, so not shelter, but permanent housing placements for all twenty two residents within ninety days, right, with a target cadence of one to two residents housed per week, right? So thus far, right, we've achieved housing, housing for ten residents so far, right? So yeah, that's a big deal. Thanks to Barry. Right? And Barry told me that we probably have an eleven tomorrow morning, right, which is fantastic, right? And importantly, what this lets us do is we're not only solving for kind of the rapid spin up and placements in and outcomes there, right? We're really ensuring that nobody's going to be frozen and die outside, right? We're not going to have that negative event to the largest extent possible, right? Where, right, it is very cold right now and this is someone who grew up in Morris County and knows what, you know, what it's like up here, right? But all that being said, right, we're also coming, coming to a point where, right, the formalized partnerships and what's working through, right, is working even more quickly than we expected. Right, uh, next slide, there. Right? So particularly when we talk about what differentiates the sprint model versus kind of the traditional provider model, right? Is here, right, with what we're doing, it's a government set direction with providers executing versus what's currently extant in the human services ecosystem up here is that providers design and they implement programs independently of one another, right? There might be some broader kind of, not necessarily mandate, but suggestion from a government or funding entity to collaborate, right? But here, there is the mandate of the accountability to do so, right? In the, in the traditional provider model, right, we're talking about annual or multi-year planning cycles. Here we have a defined time with a thirty day ramp up and from that, right, there's the expectation that is this is going to be scalable, right? Right? When we look at the quarterly or monthly reporting and kind of the meetings that are set up and whether you go to county HISC meetings, so Human Service Advisory Council meetings, where they go to continuum of care meetings, those are really set up on a monthly or quarterly basis and that cadence just doesn't get us there, right? When we're talking about making impact on a daily basis, right? And so Barry, as, as very generously, right, committed to with some of our team, right? So daily standups with real term, real time coordination, right? And so they're, they're averaging what, about an hour, hour and five minutes a day?
Yep, varies, but right around the hour.
Right? And so importantly from that is the reason why we're effectuating those outcomes, right, is that all the partners are committed to do so. They've committed to reporting out. Instead of triangulating around one another and working through it's when tension or, or an element of friction arises, right, it's, we're identifying it and we're engaging it collaboratively to do so, right? Similarly, what we talked about an integrated team with shared accountability, we're not siloing agency operations across. And we have a municipal local priority list, right? So this does not mean that these are, that the people who are becoming housed here have some federal prioritization. They don't even have state prioritization, right? Importantly, the council and the municipal government, right, of, of Newton are the people who are identifying, yes, these are the people that we are saying are the most hardest to house and the people in need of resources. And this is who we have to dedicate these resources to, to work with, right? Going ahead, right into the next one, right? So for some folks that have some familiarity with, with project management principles, right, or either have a PMP or some PMI, right? Normally, when government does things, we go through a waterfall based process, right? Whereas we have lots of plant, we have lots of meetings, then meetings about meetings, and then the decision happens outside of the meeting. And then we have about a ninety to, a ninety to three hundred and sixty five day lead time before we actually go do a thing, right? And then there's also three committees that are tied to it, right? We do not do that here at OHP, right? We leverage agile, agile project management principles where everything we do when we work with municipality is rapidly iterated, requires daily coordination, transparent accountability, results over process and an empowered team. And so importantly, what that means is that every morning when Barry, as the township representative or Tom, is on a call, right? Is that they're able to go and execute and remove any blockers and everybody who was on that call is also empowered to do so, right? It's not, oh, let me go call my executive director or let me go call Mike from the state and we'll go get an answer. It is no, it is happening right there, right? And really reducing that, reducing that communication overhead is really when we look at the totality of responses here in Sussex County, that in and of itself, right, has really yielded pretty, pretty intensive improvements there, particularly among coordination with providers, right? So if we go to the next slide, right, this is really kind of the secret sauce, if you will, right? Importantly, again, these are not different value based nonprofits with their own boards and things like that driving the show, right? They are key partners in this that are effectuating some of the housing exits, but the overall command and control structure works within the executive branch of your municipal government, right? And because of that, right, we're really making sure the final authority, strategic direction and resource allocation to include some of the resources that we here at the state have deployed, right, sit within Tom's authority to go and do so, right? And Tom being accountable to the council, right? Similarly, right, Barry, right, Barry is leading those daily municipal operations and leading that stakeholder coordination. And our role here at the state is really as a facilitator, looking through those barriers and working through coaching, right? Next slide, please. Right? So when we do any of these efforts, we identify what we call a core strategy team, right? And this core strategy team right now is, is consists of the collaborative support programs of New Jersey, Samaritan Inn, Family Promise of Sussex County, Sioux Falls Health, the Newton PD, Sussex County Department of Human Services, our, our folks and the town manager, right? And when you look at the roles here on the table to the left, right? Particularly, what we are doing is we are taking what has been a pastiche of social services where every agency does a little bit of something, but nothing really good, right? And we've had very clearly defined roles, right? And as part of this is, we're really trying to increase the depth, right, of those organizations and their ability to provide services, but also to the professionalism with which they do it, but also to their ability to be accountable with one another and to entities of government, right? Similarly, right, in doing so, right, there's been some really great work. Again, kudos to the chief, right? Your police department has been fantastic, right? Is that, is that they are doing yeoman's work of not only ensuring that the street outreach teams are doing where, what they have to do, where they have to do it and they're supported, but also to the, the community at large, we don't, we're not having to have our nonprofit partners evangelize this effort across that, right? There's that engagement merit that you talked about, right? Similarly, and I think Barry's going to talk about this a little bit, right, is the faith based institution, right, and other, and other partnerships there, right? Developing across this and kind of that opportunity here is when we talk about sustainability post this sprint, right, in different ways that people in the community can plug in, right? Like we just talked about, those are ten, we have ten households right now that have been housed through this, right? There are ways that if people are looking to get involved in this in a positive way, right, that supporting those, those housed households, right? Is a, is a fantastic way to support and to make sure that, that those adjunctive supports around community continue to happen, right? Let's go ahead, go to the next slide, right? So we're just going to go through the timeline real fast. I don't want to be too exhaustive and I'll probably just open it up for questions from, from the dais after this, right? Is, right, and looking in the phase, right? So right now, right, we are in phase zero, right? So phase zero ramp up, right, was thirty days. Our horizon on this is November seventh, right? So we have finalized the by name list, right? We have trained the providers, right? We have identified and secured shelter and temporary accommodations for at least fifteen residents, right? From my understanding, we have capacity for up to twelve, twenty residents right now. Barry's leading, right, that, that faith based Carter's and also two more expansive Code Blue, Code Blue outreach, right? And our partner in Samaritan Inn, right, has begun an exhaustive landlord outreach campaign, right, and is quickly working towards having a pool of, of what is going to be north of twenty five available units for folks to move into for a permanent basis, right? That near term goal, right, is to have fifteen units sheltered or temporarily housed by the end of phase zero, right? We are already ahead of that, here, ahead of that guideline as we actually have folks permanently housed, right? And so, which is fantastic, right? So we're not just setting money on fire, putting people in hotel rooms, we're actually getting to places where they have a lease, they have case management supportive, supportive services that are embedded, right, with that so that we can make sure that there's the least likelihood of recidivism, recidivism that's baked in there, right? Into phase one, right? So kickoff for that is November eighth and that runs to a little bit before Christmas, right, is we continue with that housing cadence, right? We have stood up and we've, we've had the fine details put on the core strategy team, Kate Daley, she's conferencing is already happening. We're working on securing some documentation, IDs and benefit enrollments for some of the residents. So one of the beauties about what we're doing is because we've deployed some state flexible funding to our partners that are effectuating these housing exits, right? Is that we don't have to necessarily wait until they have a pending Board of Social Services case that's adjudicated or, and we also have backups built in for that. Similarly, we don't have to wait for if somebody has a pending social security disability insurance claim, we have redundancies built in to pay the rent and assist those people if need so, but the second that they have the ability to sustain themselves, we will exit and give those resources away, right? Similarly, right, when we look at kind of ramp up through there is that we're really going to be targeted. When we look at kind of ramp up through there is that we're really going to be targeting six to eight permanent housing placements on a weekly base, basis we go through this, right? Um, then go ahead, next slide, right into phase two, right? Um, so in, in maintaining and increasing that cadence and also expanding that landlord engagement and deploy, in deploying of flexible funds. We're also looking here particularly, right? So Zoo Falls Health has been a really great partner and similarly Mental Health Association of America, so MHA Inspire, right? Um, in strengthening the medical and behavioral health stabilization linkages for these populations, right? Um, as mayor, as you alluded to earlier, right? Homelessness has a different, has its own flavor everywhere that you go, right? Um, with a lot of the chronically unsheltered folks that, that our teams are engaging with here up in Newton, right? There's a higher incidence and prevalence, right, of mental health and substance use than are, we'd find necessarily in that mix across, across the state. As part of that, through this, right, is we're able to leverage in our partnerships with DHS here at the state level, right? To go and ensure that those case management services that, that are happening and also to the rental rents that being paid, those lands, those landlord relationships aren't affected by something as saying, say, someone goes and says, you know what, I want to go into detox. And when I go and engage with that substance use treatment facility or that provider, they, they're going to be gone for a month, right? Our providers have the ability to continue that rental assistance, right? And make sure that that lease and that place is there for the person while they go and do what they need to do to get better, right? And so that's also what's going to contribute to the sustainability and impact of this, right? Um, and so when we talk about completion and follow-through, right? Um, again, I think we're going to be well ahead of this, right? But by February twentieth, right, we achieve permanent housing for all twenty-two residents. We talk about follow-up stabilization and tendency support services. And then also importantly, in working with your DPW and working with the police, any former encampment sites that are around, right? We make sure that not only are there postings around saying that, hey, if you are experiencing homelessness, do not camp here, you are, this is how you access services, we will work with you to get you housed, right? But we make sure that through increased police presence and other ways, right, that we're not, we're preventing re-encampment there, right? Um, similarly, talking about, you know, the mayor's vision and also the deputy mayor's vision on that is really preparing, preparing a final AAR after action report to make sure that we take these lessons learned and we should realize them more broadly throughout the county, right? And so with that, and I hope that's a good thirty thousand foot overview, happy to kick it over to Barry.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I just want to thank Tom and everyone involved here, the opportunity to be part of this. It's been a very interesting journey. I want to start out by giving kudos and shout out to DCA. I think that the upfront leadership and direction and overall organization has led to a very seamless and rapid response to a program. Uh, Tom's leadership was awesome and, and everyone involved on, uh, on the board has been super helpful. Um, I think what was key at the beginning was we spent some time, uh, diving into our needs-based and we identified our leadership and I think our leadership partners were phenomenal with Family Promises, uh, Samaritan Inn and, uh, Zoo Falls. I can't speak, uh, more proudly or the volumes I work directly every day with the Newton PD, been, they've been phenomenal. Um, as far, just, just from the standpoint, the whole group of people have worked really well together. All barriers that seemed to pop up seemed to go away really quickly because of the collaborative environment that we have. And we're, you know, just, it's really impressive to see how what was a barrier on day one is no, it's just like, we're just streamlining through all of these issues because we've become a family of problem solvers. Um, so Newton Police has been, uh, phenomenal for outreach purposes. Their eyes and ears, uh, have been phenomenal in connecting people when we've identified housing opportunities. They have been almost immediately able to reach out to Family Promises, the entity that was in the outreach process and connected, picked them up and put them in, uh, in the, in the appropriate housing. Our first weekend, our first week, our second meeting, we put two people in a house on day two, which was, we were blown away. So the nine, which will hopefully be ten tomorrow, have been phenomenal. We've had one person leave the state which we've identified and have taken off our list, so he's permanently gone, so. So I think the leadership has been phenomenal, uh, Ashley's been phenomenal, so awesome. Uh, the second part of my responsibility here has been to try and gather the faith-based community and the nonprofit organizations and trying to put them in a situation where we can work together and support these less fortunate and unhoused individuals and potential families. Um, we're currently entering into our, so the faith-based community has been very, uh, open to helping. Uh, but as we start to, they're, they're building the plan around supporting has been critical for us. And so we're starting to get the legs on my side of it of building this, the structure, so they're starting to support it a lot, uh, better. We're moving into an opportunity with Code Blue as it starts to turn cold, where I believe we've identified a facility, possibly two facilities, where we think that we could, uh, move, uh, on Code Blue evenings, uh, these individuals into these facilities and the faith-based community is ready and willing to, um, to participate and, and activate. Uh, so I'm excited about moving that process forward and giving, uh, the, this, this group of individuals warmth and security and, and housing through the cold winter, you know, winter months, um. You know, realistically, again, just to kind of circle back, I think the leadership of everyone's been phenomenal and excited about where we go and how we continue to support and help the homeless, uh, community and, and bring it to the, the town of Newton's awareness as we did street outreach, uh, with the mayor was, you know, they're, they're part of the solution and part of the ownership. And it's important that they understand that also, and we desperately want them to, to be part of the solution. And so we're working diligently as a group. And I think the efforts and the work have been, you know, really rewarding. And I think that, uh, a lot of lives have been impacted. We know nine for sure so far, but I think more will be impacted sooner than later. Thank you.
And what's the, um, so there's a case management plan, right? Someone we find, uh, housing for them, um, and there's continued touch points through our partners and others to provide ongoing case management so that the recidivism is hopefully close to nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
And so importantly, I just talked about, right, is that, um, the case management services around that and part of how we've really segmented the task ownership and what that looks like, right? Is that with Samaritan Inn, Samaritan Inn is a provider in our housing supports program, which is a joint effort between DHS and DCA, right? Where if you're eligible for New Jersey Family Care, right? Say you need ten years, right, of, of tenancy systemic case management, a case manager to work with you every single day or two day, or, or two times a week, right? In order to ensure that you're doing everything from hitting your activities of daily living to connecting to those adjacent ca, care, whether it's behavioral healthcare or something like that, that those case management services aren't bound to a grant, right? They're bound to, right, as long as Medicaid is still a thing, right? In the United States of America, and the state has authority under its eleven fifteen waiver with CMS or the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, right? That those services can continue to be provided as long as they are both clinically necessary, meaning that there's a medical need, right? And also too, which for the, for nearly a hundred percent of these individuals there is, right? And simultaneously, if there's a housing risk, right? So a good thing is what being chronically unsheltered means that, that you will, right? For as long as you remain, remain in New Jersey Family Care member, have access to those tenancy systemic case management services.
That's great. Barry, I'm encouraged by hearing you say that, um, the barriers that existed on day one with our nonprofit partners, um, are non-existent at this point. Because when we had the joint meeting with the nonprofit partners, Officer Bellis, I think for that couple of hours, pretty much what we heard were all the barriers that existed, um, because everybody kind of working in silos. Um, but it sounds like through the efforts of bringing together at least the partners that you have identified here, reducing those barriers, I'm hopeful that those, um, nonprofits haven't seen this as a big brother, but rap, uh, kind of project, but rather a truly partner, a true partnership in order to have the same goals of getting everybody housed, is that pretty accurate?
I, one hundred percent, I believe that the, what was originally a little bit of, um.
Why are you here?
No, not, not why are you here, just a little bit of being protected of your own property and what you have, uh, what, the barrier that came down immediately was we're in it together to solve a problem. And so the small pieces of a puzzle that fit together where we know location, but we know tendency. Everyone kind of had a piece of it and until we started communicating and having dialogue about it, understanding that the goal was to house them collectively, and it was a goal, uh, that we, we accomplished together. Once we did that, we were, we were home free and not home free, but we started working together, collaborating and seeing the true vision. So now it's, it's the, again, I sat in the back here today, we identified someone on the street today we were looking for, calling out the family promises, they picked them up immediately and the pieces just moved so much more quickly and more seamlessly. And again, everyone shares in the victory.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Ultimately, the homeless person or the person that was unhoused.
Yeah, and I think I'm not going to speak for Tom, but, you know, certainly the piece of taking ownership or at least, um, being a, you know, the, the coordinating partner in getting this all off the ground was because we were up against just multiple times a day quality of life calls, um, businesses being concerned, illegal activity happening, our police department, the chief's here and was, um, sharing with us the increases in the, uh, you know, tickets that were citations that were being, um, written and then all the barriers that existed, um. You know, a little bit of finger pointing, um, let's be honest, um, that was happening kind of down on the county park and, uh, on the streets and business owners frustrated and visitors to the town being frustrated and, um, all those things going on. So, um, I think Tom was put in kind of an untenable position because we needed to make a decision and I think it was the right one. Um, but the reality is, right, the town's put forth and is continuing to put forth a lot of resources. Um, so is the state and in the case of Jessica's study that she's doing, you know, partially paid for by the county. Um, so I just have to ask the practical question, you know, we have an election coming up and this, um, project is taking us into February. Well, I don't think that, you know, the coffer's going to dry up in February, but, um, you know, what could possibly happen and what could be in the impacts of the election on your department?
Oh, sure. Um, so, so, you know, through this, right? So the majority of funds that are being utilized here are state special purpose funds, right? The flow, you know, in the, in the annual budget, right, um, that the governor puts out. Um, and the legislative sure passes, right? The near-term risk of that, as far as kind of what the immediate effects are, is, you know, I'm, I'm an appointee, right? So as far as leading the office, right? But, you know, it's still the mission of the department and the office is statutorily required to exist, right? Similarly, that, similarly, there is state special purpose money, which is required statutorily to flow, right? Based upon availability of, from the treasury, right? Um, that being said, there is also statutorily the mandate, right? That whomever the director is, right, whether it be myself or others, is actively working with municipalities to continue this work as that goes, right? Um, from that, right, I'd say, I'd say that's, that is level-setting as far as the neutral, the neutral things, right? One of the near-term risks that we have, right, are some of the proposed cuts from HUD, right? At the federal level, right? Uh, there's also a very emergent threat, right? Um, from cuts not only to CPD programs, which CPT HUD has really five different offices essentially, right? Where you have community and planning development, where everything from the Emergency Solutions Grant Program to the home, the home partnership program, to, um, the Continue of Care Program. Some of the mechanisms by which we are supporting the larger, broader system here in Sussex County to include rapid rehousing dollars, permanent supportive housing dollars, things like that. There is a very real risk to those, to those dollars drying up. Um, it's my understanding that Senator Kane has signed on to a letter, uh, very recently to HUD, right, requesting that those funds not be cut, right? And that there is, um, also, um, at the Continue of Care level, right? Some of the regulatory changes and rule-setting changes are kind of walked back from what was recently prime-ligated a couple of weeks ago prior to the shutdown. That being said, um, right, is there's opportunities there to backfill potentially, right? With dollars from municipal, uh, housing trust funds, right? And so importantly, when we talk about how do we ensure that, right? What are, what about residents in Newton, right? That may be experiencing homelessness or enter into homelessness, right? You can apportion some of those funds, right? In working with your planning board or your zoning board with your, with your official, with your, um, professionals to go and ensure that not only do you have a fair share of housing settlement, right? But you can also revise that and work through it and say, we're going to be apportioning a certain percentage of those funds to address homelessness through these near-term or short-term vouchers, right? Um, similarly, you know, another risk for that right is right now is across, one of the other efforts of our office is we are working towards functionally ending veteran homelessness across the state, right? Right? As part of that is some of the cuts that are potentially coming from our federal partners, right? Are going to put the sustain of that at, you know, at very much at risk, right? Um, but all of that being said, right? Say is there is a population that for the council, right, is very much a priority, right? Whether that be families, whether that be veterans, whether that be chronically unsheltered individuals, right? How you choose to operationalize the usage of those funds as you work, right? As a, as a revenue stream to go and leverage in that way, right? That is something that is set locally, right? But then as you go, you, when you come up with your plan, the plan goes to DCA. Whomever is in my office or myself, right? Will also confer with the Division of Local Government Services and also to the Division of Local Planning Services. And we certify the plan, yes, this is a good use of what that looks like, right? It's in line with that. Um, similarly, when we talk about the case management services and kind of that near-term risk, like one of the reasons that we're not leveraging state special purpose money to fund those case management services, we need to have that longevity, right? We also need to make sure that the people that are working for these nonprofits that are in these roles, right? Let me back up a second, like, so one of the part, primary positive predictive factors, right? Of an individual not returning to homelessness is when that individual is serviced by a case manager that has a tenure of longer than one year at their agency, right? Right? And so one of the things that we can do through that and by leveraging the housing supports program is that there's continual revenue that's supporting those nonprofits, that's not grant-based. So they're not laying off staff or that institutional knowledge isn't lost, right? Say there is a political change, right, at the executive branch of the state level and funding is maybe prioritized elsewhere, right? Um, similarly, another risk, right, but it's also an opportunity here, right? Is really thinking about intra municipality, inter-operability between municipalities, but also intra-operability between different departments where you have some communities in Sussex County where they might not have a very high census of unsheltered folks, but they might have resources and they might be able to access or leverage to ensure that any gaps that appear because of reduced state funding or something like that can go in. So hopefully, I captured that.
No, that's good. Um, you know, HUD's already announced that they are moving away from permanent supportive housing funding and the state, so a lot of the money that it is being, um, routed through your office is federal funds as a state serving as a pass-through. So I just want, you know, and, and again, a lot of that being currently, um, or potentially at risk, just wanted to think about that runway because we're going to house, I firmly believe we're going to have success and house these twenty-two individuals before the, um, end of the sprint. But then this, what I've heard other people say is what happens and then it gets warm again and there's a new population or, or maybe some recidivism or a new group, you know? Then like what is the plan after the sprint? So, um, I think you're trying to establish that plan and create that plan, um, for when and if that scenario happens again, um, or, or, you know, happens once the weather gets better, uh, outside of Code Blue.
Diligently working on a four-point-six billion dollar calendar, we're trying to.
That's billion with a B.
But I do think the faith-based communities are going to be a big part of that, that support of helping them transition into permanent housing and stabilize stable life, uh, patterns and stuff like that. So I think the faith-based community needs to be a part of that for sure. And then I think supporting and helping the nonprofits that are outside of our, our current task force is going to be important to make sure they start to collaborate and work together as we started to. So I think the model that's at the top of, the top of the org chart is kind of saying, here's how it's working and it's worked well. So now we're, it's going to flush out the bottom and we'll be, hopefully pass it through and it'll support everybody underneath, which I'm sure this is my endless.
Great, Mary. We, uh, so Jessica was thirty thousand foot on the research project that I cast her with and.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief, can you come up for a few moments?
Good evening, uh, Jessica called on a town planner. So that was a good segue because I think our strategic plan is really looking to create that roadmap for the long term, um, building on the sprint process. You know, doing our research to create the short term, but also midterm and long-term goals for, you know, even just things like land use and creating more housing and how our zoning impacts availability of housing, you know, but also trying to replicate, uh, some of the things that have been going on and making sure that we have funding in our housing trust fund, you know, thinking about starting a homeless trust fund. There's just, there's a lot of different things that we can do and, and creating it as a strategic plan that has specific goals and objectives and costs associated that the town can continue to implement over time. Uh, because we all know that everything's always kind of changing around us. But I feel like with the town, we, we've been successful on shoestrings for a lot of things. Um, we've also been successful at continually working with the state and federal government to get grants and to, to fund the projects. Working with the state and federal government to get grants and to to fund the projects uh that are important to the town, and so I think this is. You know, a really good start, and you know, what we're we're building on right now is creating those goals and objectives and strategies and looking at. Creating that long term plan and long term vision for the town to functionally end homelessness in the town.
Just anything you're seeing in your preliminary studies of other municipalities and their successes or their um maybe. Learnings that. Have stood out to you?
I I mean, I I think some of the important things that we're we're learning is. You know, treating people, which which I think has been great about how this process is going, treating people with dignity and respect, the their residents. On taking ownership as a whole community, you know, of the issue, um. You know, co- collaborating between government and nonprofits and then the public, I mean, even just from the few. Uh newspaper articles that gone out, people stop me and say, oh, how can I help, you know, and so I think. A lot of people wanna be involved, and so I think part of that, if we can, you know, get that spirit, you know, we're. Thinking about different initiatives to um kind of take the stigma out of it and. And um get everyone involved, maybe the businesses as well, like at Newton Cares and. You know, de-stigmatizing, being unhoused, and that everyone's involved and everyone cares, and we're treating people like people. And not like something that we wanna just round everybody up and take them somewhere else or something. So, you know, I I think that's, I think. The programs that I I I've seen that we wanna replicate are ones that that start from from that base.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, after now publicly coming out and showing this, this plan that we have. Um I think the public and business owners and residents will have a better understanding of what's been going on behind closed doors. Um because they only see what they see, um and there was, you know, we didn't come out with our plan yet. So um I mean, people have been reaching out to me like. What, what did you do, like, it looks like night and day from two, you know, three weeks ago, like, you know. We're working with DCA, we're working with the nonprofits, and you know, we have some town partners working on this sprint that we're working on. But now that the public is gonna have this to see exactly what we're doing, I think we'll get a lot uh. Better support, more support uh in our in our ultimate goal, and I think, you know, um. As as uh Michael and Barry said, it's just the people that have been put to task. Are great people and they're doing great work, um. I couldn't be more proud of 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 my department, uh of the town, um and everybody in here uh coming together. Our nonprofits are, you know, like you said in the beginning, that first meeting was was rough.
Sure.
And from that meeting to now, it is night and day, like, everybody is working to do. Uh you know, the same goal, and it seems to be, well, the numbers don't lie, it's it's working.
Mm hmm.
You know, we just need to stay on, stay on track and, you know, continue doing what we're doing, um. I have reached out to um the the judges in the courts, um Mr. Callahan uh had mentioned uh. Possibly setting up some sort of um diversion uh court, so I wanna, I wanna kind of look into that, um. I was given a uh young lady's name, and I forget, um. Who's the woman?
What Pam?
Uh it might have been Pam.
Or Heather, since.
Hmm Heather sounds more familiar, right, I spoke with her and she um has put this uh diversion court. Together uh in Newark, um and I think NJ Transit also had it too, um. So for like very low level offenses, um it was a. Basically, a gateway to people that are creating these low level uh enforcement issues. It was a gateway to get them into a program.
Correct.
So the courts could kind of facilitate, hey, okay, here's, we're gonna, we're gonna guide you towards this program. And then we can kind of work from there for these like low level, um I think that, I think that would be a great idea um to to maybe adopt that. Uh not only in Newton, but you know, countywide, um it might be a good access point to these individuals. So uh it's something that I'm working on as well.
So the last time you were here, you were talking about the increase in tickets being written, what's the last month or so been like?
Um definitely lower than uh the summer, uh the summer was high before we, before we started this. Uh the exact number I do not have right now, uh but it is, it is drastically lower, um you know, from even. Just a couple of weeks ago, um so it's working, you know. There still are some. But, you know, uh that's, I mean, that's gonna be, you know.
Right. Ms. Russo.
Maybe to the public here on Zoom, in case of any.
I wanna see if there's anything for you to add, I wanna open up to the council and then we'll open to the public, if that's okay, my, uh anything else? That Tommy wanted to.
Appreciate it, yeah, I kinda have taken on as a personal mission, but I. It will, I'll never get, I'll never forget for many years, that first meeting I sat in on when I was on Zoom, when I was looking at everybody. It was probably the H SAC meeting, and I'm sorry, but it was five minutes in and I I. It triggered and I just looked at all of them and I said, who's who's my alpha? And they just stared at me.
Yeah.
And I knew at that moment, I was the alpha, one, it was part of it, and two. Nobody took ownership of the problem, that was kind of disheartening, actually, because it's some millions of dollars, hundreds of people. Decades of effort, and and nobody was taking the lead, and you know, and. My heart, I said, oh, this is a county problem.
We all did.
Right, it's a county dream, so it's kind of like a myopic, and I said this during the commissioner meeting, it's kind of a myopic view of, well, it's the county problem, right? It's not the town's problem, we don't have the bandwidth to really manage this, but I think we had. The best interest of the community at heart, not that the county didn't, the nonprofits did, but I said this to Sandy, when we were on the phone one time, I said. Because I know Sandy had some hesitation, I don't think that's unfair to say, I said, who will care more about the town than the town?
Mm hmm.
In the end, so I know it's, you know, staff, bandwidth, I mean, Michael should probably get an apartment here. Terrific, it's gonna be a lot of money, it's gonna be a lot of time, and. This commitment is lifelong for this town, it will far exceed any of your service, my service, any of us here. But it's the right thing to do, because there will always be someone in need, and shouldn't it be up to us to help them? And to me, that's what it came down to, so, you know, I'm really proud of everybody because. You know, I'd love to replicate this in five hundred sixty three other towns, I really think there's a model that we've created that. Is is really inspiring, and yeah, I would say.
The mayor? Questions?
Um, I I I kind of touched on it last week, um I guess with. Uh the the impact I thought this was gonna leave on everybody of how proud we can be of all this, I mean, just from top to bottom. Um Tom's initiative and all the staff, the police department, uh Barry been phenomenal. Uh DCA, Mr. Callahan's been just, I mean, s- set this whole thing in motion. I I, we've had such a small part, us, of this, but I'm so proud to have that small part, um. Just the the compassion, the the sense of community and. How humanely we're we're handling this is is really just amazing, and I'm just happy to be a small part of it. And that Newton is kind of leading the way in this, in the county, so.
Sean, questions?
Um yeah, certainly some good work being done, uh I did read through the the report and stuff, um. So, uh thinking the possibility of like maybe getting just a an overview, Tom, of each of the phases as they come. You know, like, with the due dates, right, so the next one is November eighth, I think, through December twenty second. You know, so some council meeting between that time, like, where are we in phase two? You know, just to keep us all apprised of of what's going on, um and um. You know, we talk about the faith based community and their support, and I'd just like to understand a little more, um. You know, those partnerships that it sounds like we're entering, which is great, um and. Um yeah, good work, guys, and very supportive, so thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
I wanna thank all of you for what you've done, and the most important is treating the individuals with the dignity that they deserve, thank you.
What's left to say?
Other questions?
No, I don't, I don't think I have any questions, any questions that. Um you know, mostly, or mostly just, you know, looking at the perspective of, uh you know, eternal change and. You know, the political realignment potentially, and it'll be interesting to see, you know, what plays out in the long term, but um. This is, this is as, you know, it's it's weird to say that this is exciting, um because there are, you know. Lives at stake, lives very much so affected by this, but it it is exciting to see a change because. I very often deal with the, you know, eh eh day to day, week to week, kind of in the moment. Difficulties that are experienced with the individuals and the individuals experiencing their difficulties, so you know, it's 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 exciting in the sense that. You know, for the first time, there's maybe some tangible change um going to occur here in town, and it's, it's. I'm excited.
Yeah.
For everyone involved, but yes, thanks to everyone, and I'm I'm excited.
Okay. All right, Tom, let's see if we have any questions from, uh first of all, anybody here in Town Hall? I'm sitting in the public, no questions, okay, anybody online have any questions with regards to the uh. Presentations that were just made? We have a lot of people joining tonight. Okay, we do have a public session coming up, so maybe we'll be formulating, formulating their questions then. All right, thank you all very, very much, appreciate you. Okay.
Back to the rest of the year. We have one hand.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike.
So I'm still now, we have um Jerry and Joshua, indeed, um as you know, I looked. The first round, we had Enterprise come here, I looked into other companies, some said we can't show our savings. Um I sat with, I had a uh Zoom with Jerry. Um and he came with this uh proposal, so um so D and M. He hooked, he's, I don't have to, I don't wanna take any steam out of their, their engine, but um. They they spent an hour with me on on the phone, um I supplied them with, again, um all the vehicle lists. And then they also put together two or three years with the um gasoline usage and vehicle maintenance. Which then they used and they formulated in presentations, so Jerry, take it over.
Well, good evening, everybody, thanks for having us, we really appreciate that, um you're not gonna see my son's picture, he just had surgery. So he he's, he's staying in the background for now, um. Well, we did the fleet analysis, and if you'd like, I'd be more than glad to go over that analysis with you, the analysis was based on. Information that Tom had shared with us, uh for example, the um. The size of the fleet, how much fuel was used over a certain period of time, maintenance costs, et cetera. And let me see if I can actually pull that up. Let's see here. Think I asked for.
Yeah, you should have. Share your screen.
Yeah, I'm not sure where I, no, let's see here, does that need to come over to the main screen? Okay, hang on here. And let's go here. Can you all see the uh?
Yeah.
The spreadsheet up here?
Yeah, I got it.
All right, well, we'll just kind of go through this really quick and ask questions as we go, but. What makes this fleet analysis uh fairly accurate is because it's based on information that we received from Tom. So it's the information that Newton has that they supplied us, so the fleet size that we came up with was a fleet size of forty one units. We used all forty one for the fleet analysis. Your average age of fleet, your average is eight, you had some that were older, some that you're on younger, but the average fleet size was eight. If we put you on a uh rotating cycle, which I believe we used as five years to rotate the. Fleet out every five years, new one comes out, comes in, old ones go out, you would need to basically replace eight point two, roughly eight. Vehicles per year for five years to rotate out your fleet. We use the average unit cost between some police units and regular white fleet, what we call white fleet or vehicles. That are used like in uh public works, et cetera, we use those as a common denominator of fifty nine thousand. So that'll kind of give you an idea of where we, where we go from here. Uh based on your fleet management or your fleet maintenance, you're over a six year period, you've spent five hundred thousand dollars. On your fleet, maintaining the fleet to keep it going, that's PM, or excuse me, preventative maintenance. And any other services that were required, whether it's hoses, belts, et cetera. Your fuel cost over the past two years was ninety seven thousand nine hundred and twenty nine, so ninety eight thousand um. Fuel is what your cost was, which then equates to almost fifty two thousand gallons. Which then would bring your price, if all of the information was correct, a dollar and eighty eight cents per gallon. That is awesome, I'm going to move to Newton so I can get gas at a dollar eighty eight. But again, based on the information that we have that Tom supplied us over a two year period and whatnot, that's what it comes to, it also comes to this little line right there. Where it shows your average fleet uh miles per gallon on that eight, um on your average of eight years old. Is twelve dollars and forty one, uh excuse me, twelve forty one, so you're actually getting uh twelve and a half miles to the gallon. Based on the information. Your total fleet mileage, which is right here, your total fleet mileage, when we added up all the mileage that was sent to us. Was uh roughly two point six million miles, which then averages out to about seventy eight hundred miles per unit. I understand patrol might go higher, uh some of your white fleet might be right in that range. But when we do a fleet analysis, it's not a per vehicle, but it is a, let's call it a thirty thousand foot view. It's looking at your fleet as an entirety, which the numbers are good, whether they float up or float down, math is still the math. So based on the overall fleet, your fleet is running around, let's call it between seventy eight, eight thousand miles per year. Um based on any auction items, that's what this value is here. Based on auction items and things that I believe Tom said you donated or whatnot, uh the average was about two thousand dollars per unit on an aged unit. Um and when we take all of this information, it's all based on, of course, calculations and formulas. But all of this information back here is your information, and then it transposes over to the front side, which is this fleet side right here. So everything on this left hand side that you can see, by the way, can you see it, or do I need to make it larger for y'all? Oh, okay, great, um so on the left hand side, this is the same information that was on the backside, forty one units. Your average age is eight years, but here's what's interesting, if you look at this right here, your current maintenance. It's costing you a hundred and eighty four dollars and fifty eight cents per vehicle per month to keep them running, that is very high. And it boils down to eight cost percent, so for every mile, every vehicle, every mile it drives, it's costing you twenty eight cents to keep it on the road. Once again, high, um here again is the center, this is based on annual miles, your fuel. Is a dollar eighty eight per cost, the left hand side is what you're doing now, the right hand side is what we would propose. So we're proposing the same forty one fleet, we're proposing you go on a five year cycle, five years, now it could be that. We need PD to go quicker, maybe they wanna swap out every three years or four years, again, when we. Again, when we start to drill down on individual departments, we'll get more of a clearer view. But once again, this is overall the fleet. So, uh, if we went on a five-year rotation, we could bring your maintenance down to fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents per unit per month. Which then comes out to eight cents. That eight cents is blended between police, white fleet. Police are gonna cost you more to operate than, of course, your white fleet is, but on an average eight cents. And your proposed miles to gallon, based on newer vehicles and whatnot, you should get somewhere in the neighborhood of an average of fifteen. I wanna address the eight cents per mile, where that comes from. That's an average price, or I should say an average cents per mile on all the fleets that we handle, okay? And we handle some pretty big fleets here at D and M. Our biggest fleet that I would say that we handle. Is probably our state agency, uh, DPS, Department of Public Safety, eight thousand vehicles in their fleet. That's probably the largest police fleet and whatnot that we handle. We do their police, we do their. Uh, CID or their criminal investigation vehicles, et cetera. So. That's, that's basically what this looks like. Now, when we come down here to this line right here. This line represents, the yellow line represents what you would do is if you went to go purchase. So, once again, if you went to go out and purchase eight point two, which again, it would either be eight or you'd purchase nine, but for the, for keeping it exact. Your purchase price, based on that fifty-nine thousand, okay, it would cost you four hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to go out. And purchase eight vehicles. Your maintenance would be exactly what your maintenance is. You're gonna swap out eight new ones, but majority of your fleet is still old. So your maintenance will still remain the same. Your equity, if you took eight vehicles out. And you got two thousand dollars for them, based on your information, you'd get sixteen thousand dollars in equity coming back to you. Which then your fuel cost would remain the same, so you'd need a budget of five hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and eighty-one. Everybody with me so far? Okay. That's what you would need if you purchased. Now, let's go to the second line, which is leasing. So if you go over here to the line where it says owned, you would still own thirty-three, but you would lease eight. Which then means here's your lease payment. So your lease payment's a hundred and five. Your maintenance basically stays the same. Again, you're swapping out eight for, uh, eight new ones. But you're still gonna have a majority of your fleet older. We're going, you're going to get the sixteen thousand because it's your fleet, we're taking eight of your old ones. And then your fuel is the same, your budget's the same, it's, as your fleet budget, your total out-of-pocket is three seventy-eight, excuse me. Your total out-of-pocket for your fleet budget is two thirteen, which comes to a savings of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we won't go over this completely, but you can see as you lease twenty-five, excuse me, as you own twenty-five and lease sixteen. As you own sixteen, lease twenty-five, et cetera, notice how your maintenance starts going down. It's because your fleet is getting newer. So you're not replacing belts and hoses, transmissions, engines, that kinda stuff. You're just basically doing preventative maintenance. Oil changes, tire rotations, the occasional wheel alignment. Um, so your maintenance starts to go down and your fuel starts to go down, because instead of getting twelve miles to the gallon. You're getting an average of fifteen, so your fuel expenses, your fuel cost will go down. So maintenance goes down, fuel goes down, and if you look here, your equity starts to go up. Because based on everything that we do, we get somewhere between three and five thousand dollars worth of equity per vehicle. I figured five thousand per vehicle on your end because of the fact that you're only putting in eight thousand miles per unit on your vehicles. So if you look at a five-year-old vehicle and you're doing even ten thousand miles. It's a five-year-old vehicle with fifty thousand miles. It's going to bring a very high resale value. That resale value will result in equity coming back to the city. And you can use that equity to help self-fund the next round, which then decreases your payment. Or you can do a lease all fresh and you can take the equity back, put it back into your capital expenditures, whatever you need it for. So the money is yours to do as you please. Overall, on a ten-year fleet analysis. The city should see somewhere in the neighborhood of one point two million dollars in savings, moving from a. Purchase scenario and moving over to a leasing scenario where your. You have a replacement cycle in place, you're rotating the vehicles properly between white fleet, between, uh, PD. And when we do that, we look at every individual, every individual vehicle. So you, you could even have some in white fleet that might rotate out at four years, or you could go six years. Depending, but we use five years as an average. If you went six years, your payment would go down. But now your maintenance starts to creep up because you're keeping your vehicle just a little older. So the whole premise behind leasing is to basically get rid of maintenance. And have your resale values increase, so you're getting more money back to the city. And with those components and the decrease in your fuel expenses, that's what results. In the savings that any city or state agency can see. And it's just a matter of taking, instead of Tom coming to you every year and saying, I need X amount of dollars for maintenance to keep our fleet running. You're just taking that money and you're moving it over. The good thing about leasing is that you know what your payment is. Counsel can look at that year to year and see, this is what we need to budget. This is how much we need to budget. If you swapped out your entire fleet and were running brand-new and it was like today, this is that number. You need five hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty dollars. That's basically. Five hundred thousand dollars to operate a brand-new fleet rotating out constantly every five years, so it's easy to budget for. Um, but that's kinda like how this works. Um, I can tell you a little bit about us. We've been in business for forty-five years. And we have the exclusive state contract with the state of Texas. We went out for a, they went out for an RFP. We went up against numerous, um, agencies and, um, they awarded us the exclusive contract. I know that doesn't mean a lot in New Jersey, but it's, Texas is a huge state. And for them to give us the exclusive, that's something that we're very proud of. But, um, we do leasing vehicles from coast to coast. I think we're as far east, uh, far west as Portland, Oregon. And we're as far east as places in Florida, like Winter Park, Florida, Miramar, Florida. We have clients, no clients in New Jersey, but we got clients in Pennsylvania, I think would be probably the closest, and we have a few in New York. But, um, we're headquartered in Fort Worth, Texas, but we do leasing nationwide, hence why. We're able to do this for, uh, the town of Newton. Do you all have any questions you wanna hit me up with for leasing or about the company or anything else?
Jerry, thank you for the presentation. So a question, just to, for my own clarity. On the yellow line, on the page that we were just on, so page thirteen of the PowerPoint?
Yes.
The yellow line assumes if we were to go out and purchase all forty-one vehicles today, is that correct?
No, it assumes that you're only gonna go out and purchase eight.
On the yellow line?
Yes, the yellow line is it, okay. Fifty-nine, we, we would never propose swapping out the entire fleet at once. We would take your first eight older ones. Now, if the budget can, if the budget can afford ten, we could do ten and then maybe six, you know, every year after that, so.
So I was just calculating, assuming they're all on lease, that five twenty-six, four forty, right? Divided by forty-one, divided by twelve months, that's how you get the monthly lease payment of a thousand seventy on each of the forty-one vehicles?
Basically, it's a thousand seventy. Now, remember the thousand seventy is blended between police with all of their lights and stuff. And then just the basic F-one-fifty, where you might have just a regular cab, vinyl seats, rubber flooring.
Yeah. That's all forty-one. Each one having that monthly lease payment.
But like, you know, if you did like a, let's say you just did a Ford or a, or any, any regular cab truck. With vinyl seats, like a work truck, what we would call a work truck, power windows and locks, but it would have vinyl seats, rubber floors and stuff like that. You know, you might be looking at only a payment of like five fifty or six hundred. Police vehicle, depending on how much the outfits are, you know, the average Tahoe. Or Explorer's like fifty thousand, and by the time you put on fifteen or twenty or twenty-five thousand or whatever outfits are. That payment could be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred. But again, this is, this kinda gives you a, like I said, it's a thirty thousand foot view of what the whole fleet would look like. But you would automatically, uh, no doubt about it, everybody who's, we've moved to leasing over the last. Ten to fifteen years since we've been in government, they're all experiencing tremendous savings. And you'll see it year by year, because we'll do an annual fleet review with you to show you, like, this is, this is our delta. This is our baseline. So next year, when we come to you, we can say, counsel, you started off at twenty-eight cents a mile. And after the first year, we've gotten you down to twenty cents a mile. And then year two, we've gotten you down to seventeen cents a mile, and you'll see that progression every year. Until we continue to drill down, get you the right vehicles, work it out for the right kinda mileage, the right utilization and everything until. It's running like a swell, I mean, a smooth, um, oiled machine, and then you'll start to see more and more savings as that goes along. So that's what we do. We're a fleet management company. We, we are, we're experts in leasing. But we're ex, we're more of an expert in managing your fleet, and that's what Joshua would do. He would work side by side. With Tom in a partnership to constantly be in communication, what are your needs? Let's take a look at it. We have software that you would be able to, um, uh, have users on, on your side to see your fleet. Uh, you'd be able to see everything regarding your fleet, pull reports, whatever you all needed. I mean, that's a proprietary software that you all would have access to.
So you mentioned that you, uh, are on the fleet management side. What about the vehicle acquisition side? Do you help facilitate that or is that done?
No, I think you have the full presentation. Um, we do everything from acquiring, ordering directly from the factory. Getting your plates, your li, I mean, your title and licensing, we do. We do it all. We deliver a turnkey vehicle to Tom. So whether it's a, a white truck with just a simple toolbox in it. Or it's a police outfit with, uh, lights, bells, sirens, and the whole nine yards. All the way down to window tint, unit numbers, whenever you get it, you just put the key and you go. And everything can be built right into the lease, so it's only one payment that you make.
Mr. Perry, anything to add? What's the downside?
Um, so, oh yeah, the delivery, I think, comes on a truck, I mean, but, and, and both companies, um. Deal right from the, from the dealer, uh, for the manufacturer, cut out the middleman, so. When there's times when you can't, you know, go through the normal channels, like the chief used or. They have to drive down and, and beg for a car that was on the lot, uh, whatever dealership. Cause five other police departments were there, you know, you, you, you just, Jerry would work with, or, or the chief would work with Joshua. And say, hey, you know, we're ready for the next car. They would order it, put in whatever the chief wants, have it, and it would be delivered here. So I think that's the biggest thing, um. The, the maintenance, we can use, uh, certain companies within this area for maintenance, um, if we need it. Um, we could do a maintenance plan, which Jerry didn't talk about, but there's basically a maintenance plan that gets. Put into the pla, uh, the payment. The covers basically everything except tires and brakes and oil changes, which we would do anyway. Because we've got the capabilities to do all that stuff, cause we've, we still, we'll be doing maintenance on them, uh, because we have the equipment. Um, and, and. Kick, we, it seems like Newton's been just kicking the can down the road with some of our vehicles, because we've been bonding. For vehicles, SUVs, cause you can't, you can't do a bond ordinance for, for a, um. Cruiser, you, you only have, you could only do it for SUVs, and we've been getting away with. The police, every police department, the whole state's been doing away with all the cruisers and to go in more with SUVs. Which is a bondable vehicle or bond law. So that means that if we wanted to do something, we would have to, to do a bond ordinance for it. And then what we do is after the, we sell notes all over the place, enroll them. We do a bond sale, but now the bond sale's for ten, fifteen, twenty years, so you're still paying for a vehicle. That is already gone, you know, the police vehicles only last three to five years, maybe five. And if we do keep them that long, they get pushed off to the, the road department, to the, um. Water department or, you know, something like that, but they're pretty beat up. I mean, the one that we gave to the county was. We, was two thousand dollars and it was, they had to have it towed. I mean, so that's what you're looking at, you're looking at, and Adam has already said to me, you know, we've. We've talked about some of the older equipment in the road department. Where, you know, some, one of the vehicles you can see through the floor, cause it's just eaten up. Um, maybe Jerry can help me a little bit, but the equipment we're going to get. Has, um, all newer, I'm not gonna say bells and whistles, but it's gonna have, you know, the safety equipment. Um, the. Jerry, help me out on the, the, um, the new technology kinda things that would be upgraded for the, for the new vehicles?
Well, if you're talking about like the white fleet, um, like public works. Of course, the newer stuff is all gonna have, you know, lane change assistance automatically. It's gonna have bla, blind spot. You're going to have rear cameras, um, all of those types of things are safety features. Most of all vehicles now will all have. Uh, not only the navigation system, so you can keep your employees off their phone, so they can have Bluetooth. They can have the nav system on their screens, so if they have to go somewhere, um, you can even. If you wanted the GPS systems that we offer and somebody was rerouting them, they could actually do the reroute. And then just upload it right to their system, so they don't have to mess with it. So there, there's a lot of newer technology. That they can have out there when it comes to keeping safe, and I think Bluetooth is one of. One of the better ones and of course, lane change and whatnot, so those are some of the safety features. And again, as, as technology changes and you're rotating your fleet, you're not gonna be behind. You're gonna always have the latest technology, which is gonna keep your employees safer. When it comes to police vehicles, of course, they're just different, um. I think some of the features that you can have on them, and I don't know that you have these issues, but. There's plenty of places where we have here in Texas, you can get what they call perimeter breach. Which means if the police officer is sitting there and he's taking notes or he's writing a report or. Or just in trying to enjoy a sandwich or whatnot, he can hit a button and it's called a perimeter breach. And if anybody gets within thirty feet of that vehicle, lights automatically come on, sirens go off and it alerts. The, uh, police officer that someone's approaching his vehicle, so. We use that a lot in Texas. We use a lot of, uh, ballistic shields, a lot of ballistic doors, so. And, and I don't know that the town of Newton needs them, but we offer all of that. And then again, can put that right into your lease payment, so you're not making different payments everywhere. Chief tells us what he needs and he gets it approved, we'll put it in the vehicle and deliver it to him. And when it comes to white fleet, no matter what you want. Um, it'll handle, we can do everything from bucket trucks, so you can change street lights to trim trees, whatever you need.
Tom, is there any positive influence on our insurance? By going through a fleet, having a newer, uh, fleet than not?
Yeah, I asked staff for the safety equipment and I pretty much, the answer is pretty much no. If, if anything, maybe minimal.
But I think better for the employee safety and morale, I would say, so, you know, if it's okay with the council, we just wanted to, you know. Keep you up to date on the research that we're doing and Tom and I will, you know, continue our review as we go through the budget process. But we wanted to expose you to, you know, another option besides the enterprise one that we have previously discussed. And then if there's any questions, you can, you know, let us know, then reach out to Jerry and. Continue our conversation with them, but we decided we're gonna go in some direction for the next year's budget.
Any other questions to the council?
Thank you, Jer.
Thank you, Jerry.
Very much.
You, good information, thanks.
I was just, before we go, Joshua, did you have anything you wanted to say? Add something I missed? We good?
Thank you.
Okay.
Take care.
Thanks, Jerry, be well.
All right, we'll move on to our next order of business. We have approval of minutes from October fifteenth, um. For a regular meeting and October fifteenth executive session. Any noted changes or anything like that to be had? Didn't know if anybody else had any other changes. Nope. So I need a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of October fifteen, twenty twenty five, regular meeting and October fifteen, twenty twenty five, executive session.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Teets. Roll call, please.
Mr. Coos?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFleur?
Yes. All right, at this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to provide the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments. So it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record to anyone in the chambers. Any comments? Okay, anyone online, Tom?
Don't see any at this time. All right, we'll move on to council and manager reports, Mr. Russo.
I heard just a few items. I just want to congratulate all the nominees for the twentieth annual Sussex County Economic Development awards. The ceremony is coming up on the fourteenth of November. Approximately one third of the nominees are Newton related or affiliated. So that's pretty cool. So we'll see how, how that goes on November fourteenth. I want to uh invite everybody, obviously Halloween parade's coming up. That's this Friday. So hopefully people in town will enjoy the parade at three forty-five PM. We also have flags of honor coming up. We have sixty-eight so far. Deadline is November first, so the flags of honor will be here at town hall on the eighth. Just friendly reminder, we're closed on November fourth. Vote early, vote often, and we are closed on kidding, and November eleventh for Veterans Day. So thank you to all the veterans who have served. I joined the mayor and Michelle. We were, enjoyed the uh Pride Foundation in Town of Newton five K. I'm sure both of them can speak, but there was a hundred and thirty-six runners and it was a lot of fun, nice event. I think people appreciated it. So hopefully bigger and better next year. And a shameless shout out to my parents who are celebrating. They will watch this after the fact. Sixty-two years of marriage today. So happy anniversary, mom and dad. It will take me four marriages to catch up to that. Kidding Trish, I just want to say love you both. Happy anniversary, mom and dad.
Anniversary today.
Thank you.
Councilman Coos?
Welcome to the town.
Just wanna congratulate your parents on their anniversary. And um, just remind everyone that the holiday party is moving along. Those interested in participating, uh, may go to the website.
Wait, Halloween, the parade, I mean, holiday parade?
The holiday parade. Um, may go to the website and there are forms there. If you hadn't received one in the mail, feel your email. So, or you can contact me. That's about it.
Okay, Councilwoman Teets?
Um, so a bit of good news that our town resident and standout uh football player, Sean Carson uh was selected as the Super Football Conference Young Man of the Year, which is a reflection on his uh community service, selflessness, leadership and off the field and creating a positive school or team environment. Um, so we congratulate um Sean and I personally know his parents and uh you know, it's a, um, you can see where he became such a, a strong leader. And I, Tom, again, thank you for having this discussion on the, the homeless. Um, I think it's good information and if there's somehow, you know, I know we've, we do have some media folks on the, online tonight. So hopefully we can get the story out. Um, and let everyone know the positive work that's being done. And then just a, a comment on the, the fleet management and um so this is Michelle's opinion, not that of Officer Bellis, but I was in Officer Bellis's vehicle on Saturday morning. Uh, we were trying to move some cars from the
Glad you qualified that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And uh, the vehicle um definitely makes some noises and um I wasn't sure, like, oh my gosh, am I gonna have to walk back to the high school? Cause I don't wanna go further than a mile then, but um, so I do see where there, you know, there could be some potential in uh, in turning over the vehicles. And then, like I said, Officer Bellis was not complaining, but um, you know, eh, they're making it work, but I could see where they, they do get old and worn out. And as has been mentioned, the uh, the five K this past Saturday, the weather was wonderful. Thank you, thank you. And uh, and there's some, there's some fast folks here in the area. Um, so the winner was a fifteen-year-old um carmine botaglia. He ran that course in twenty-one minutes and four seconds. And as soon as he finished that, he graciously left the area to go play in his soccer game. So that just exhausted me for the day because that was more than I accomplished in a week. Um, and then the uh top female was Olivia Hirsenberg and she's twelve years old. And minutes and twenty-three seconds. So very, very impressive times. I also spoke to one of the older gentlemen that um had placed in his age category. And he told me it's uh ten weeks from couch to running a five K. So next year, you know, all of us will mark that ten weeks before and we'll run as a group, including, you know, Tom and uh
Terry.
And, and Terry.
We had town hall employees, they were there.
Yeah, there were some town hall employees and they and uh I think it would be fun to, you know, come up with a costume theme and um, and make this happen. But congratulations to both Danielle Finkel, the rec commission, rec committee commissioner, lead, executive, whatever her title is.
Supervision supervisor.
Thank you. I think I always mess up her title. And also to Carla Brunel, who um is running the, the New and Pride Foundation. You know, for the two of them, this is their first time out and to have that many volunteers and it really ran smoothly. Um, I just, I see it getting bigger and better over the years. So congratulations to all of them for their hard, and thanks for their hard work. That is all. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Nothing additional at this time.
Okay, um, on October twenty-second, um, Councilwoman Teets and I attended the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership Symposium and Mayor's Annual Dinner. Um, there were presentations by the New Jersey Business Action Center, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the United Counties Economic Development uh Corporation. Um, and so I think just earlier today, we received the uh materials from that meeting electronically and so we'll send that out and forward it to everybody. But um, some good information and um unused available grant funds. Um, so I think, Tom, there might be some good information for us to put perhaps on our website. Um, our uh how to open a business webs- uh webpage on our website, because there are some new um dollars and available dollars for uh business owners, small businesses that want to um make improvements to their buildings. Um, in particular, uh, the NJEDA uh has grants for small businesses that, for example, if they want to do uh an improvement to their business, they reimburse businesses, business owners up to fifty thousand dollars for costs associated with making interior external or exterior building improvements um and or purchasing, installing furniture, fixtures, equipment. Um, and now new home-based businesses are also eligible. So we have a lot of um buildings that are mixed use uh residential, commercial and uh other material or other information there. Um, so we'll forward on that information, but I thought it was a good evening um and a good annual update that uh that Tammy Horstfield and the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership puts out to the municipalities. Um, last Friday, I uh was invited to attend the annual Project Self-Sufficiency kickoff for their Season of Hope. Um, and there were lots of kudos for our police department because our police department, so the Season of Hope program helps to provide uh holiday presents for over two thousand children, over one thousand uh families. And um, they park everyone up at the college and um shuttle everybody over for this, this two days of this huge um kind of retail setup that's, that's put together. And our police department and others helped to uh crowd control and parking control and um, help to get people from the college over to Project Self-Sufficiency and help um mitigate any traffic concerns in that area during that very intensive um, big campaign. So, thank you, chief.
Police departments around the county volunteered to come up and come help.
Yes, and that was mentioned, um
It's definitely a county effort.
And then, yes, for sure was mentioned, um, but also with specific uh kudos to the Newton Police Department. So thank you for that. Um, as Michelle mentioned, we attended the Newton Pride um Foundation and Town of Newton five K this past weekend. And the only thing I'll add is, it was uh, it was a great weather day. Um, and the sun came out and uh Danielle and the Noon Pride group did a great job to run the five K, but also a lot of those results, Michelle, they were running in costumes, like dinosaur costumes and like full costumes. So that's another impressive feat and um uh, someone said to us, Tom, you might recall, someone said that they had just participated in another five K earlier in the month, um, which is deemed in Sussex County the most difficult five K. But then he ran our hours and went up Foster and went up this hill at Foster and said, ah, yeah, forget it. Newton's is um the most difficult five K. So
It's like no one wanted to change it. They wanted it to
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
From, you know, the folks that I spoke to, which was, you know, impressive on their part.
Yeah, that was even after um like four straight days of construction on Foster Street too. So
Yeah.
Um, yeah, good job. Um, also just wanted to make mention that on October twenty-second, uh, the Town of Newton achieved our Sustainable New Jersey Bronze Certification. Um, so I know that email was shared, but congratulations to everybody who worked on that project to get our um certificate. Um, and that's, by the way, there are other levels, but that's the level that we were to attain, is that bronze level. Um, through our planning efforts, our zoning efforts and, and others. So thank you for that. Um, and then as Tom mentioned, yes, we do have at least twenty-seven, I think I quickly counted, out of eighty-two uh nominees for the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership uh awards that are Newton-based or Newton-adjacent. Um, so best of luck to all, everybody and all the entities that were nominated. I think that's all I have for today. We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have resolutions uh two thirty through two thirty-five. Tom, can you review them?
We have change order number two for the phase two sewer rebid, two thirty-one fireworks display annual at Newton Medical Center. Two thirty-two is the formal appointment of Nicole as animal control officer. Two thirty-three is a disclosure contract for JLL. Two thirty-four, premium payment turned over to the treasurer, bills and vouchers, two thirty-five.
Anybody uh looking to have anything removed from the agenda?
Uh, two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one. We'll remove that and handle that separately. Any others? All right, do I have a motion to uh approve the consent agenda as presented, removing resolution two thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five?
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by uh Councilwoman Teets. A roll call, please.
Mr. Coos?
Uh, I lost the numbers from my extensions. I haven't written it. It will be uh one, four, two, three, five and one, four, two, zero, two. Uh, extensions on those bills, yes.
What was the second one? One, four?
Uh, one, four, two, zero, two.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFleur?
Yes. All right, with regards to resolution two thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five, Mr. Coos?
I have a steam.
Okay, that's the only reason why you wanted to pull it?
Yeah, that and I have a steam.
Okay, all right. Okay, so um with no other discussion, do I have a motion to approve resolution two thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five?
I will make the motion to approve two thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five. And I will second.
Uh, okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Councilwoman Teets. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Coos?
I abstain.
Mr. Dixon?
I abstain.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFleur?
Yes. All right, at this point, we will reopen the meeting to the public. Come on up. State your name.
Joseph Atkinson, A T K I N S O N. Um, so I know the town does major like improvements all the time, which is great. We love calling you in our home. Uh, many family here, not the only in our house, but throughout the neighborhood. Um, but as we're doing these improvements, the construction companies that are coming in are treating our neighborhood like it's a construction zone and not residential neighborhoods. And in doing so, they're potentially causing damage to other people's property, but have caused damage to my property. Um, they have made right by it, which was great. Um, but it's, you know, they're residential neighborhood. It's not a construction zone. So we really need to focus on families that are walking up and down the street as well as people who live in the houses next door and we're working.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in person. Tom, anybody online?
No raised.
Okay, we will close the public hearing to uh the public? Yes, we have a lot of construction going on in town. Um, as a matter of fact, at the event uh on the twenty-second, Michelle and I were at, uh, we had representatives from our utilities company uh who I know are going to come and provide an update to the council just on the work that they've done and repairs and, and whatnot. Um, it sounds like you had something, but you worked with the company to get it corrected? Yeah, I mean, that's what I was just gonna say, Joe, is that, you know, making people aware of things that you're seeing, right? So if equipment's being left in an unsafe manner, or if there's things that are happening, um, whether reporting it right to the contractor, certainly our police department who are providing um construction detail uh would be helpful, right? As we continue to monitor the vendor work that's being done in town, um, would be helpful. Uh, but there is a lot of work going on, um, for the good and some of it I think has been done. Now, I don't wanna say it's not in our control, right, Tom, but we've had some utility work that um is being done because the utility companies decide to do that work. So, yeah, I, I mean, I would just say, like, if you see something, I know it sounds kind of corny, we've been saying all the time, but if you see something, say something. Cause it helps us to just continue to manage um whatever, whatever issues might be out there. Particularly if they're not on two oh six or any of the main roads and they're doing work within a like where you live, where it's kind of off the beaten path, so to speak, and people aren't going to see it, you might be the only one that's, that's reporting what the issue is. Tom, maybe?
Yeah, they were, they were lazy and they, you know, caused damage to Joe's vehicles. So they, they took care of it by detailing the vehicles, but that's the contractor, that's part of our sewer project. So they were spoken to about being a little bit more conscious of the cement dust and things. They were doing the test holes on division for the rehab. So, yeah, that we, we have to be more conscious of and they have to be more conscious of, like Joe said, we're working in these confined areas in the neighborhoods is very different than, you know, a project on two oh six.
Correct.
You know what I mean? So, yeah. So, and I spoke to the engineers about it as well.
Good. Thank you. All right, do we have any additional council or manager comments?
I just forgot to mention before, I received a communication from a resident on Liberty Street who was affected by the Linwood Annex uh, traffic direction, decisions and changes. I'm just reaching out with appreciation um, for our continued thought because tap into in a, uh, an article specifically on that matter. He saw it was resolved to the uh, his liking and, you know, the neighbor's liking.
Good. Any other?
Uh, I would like to, uh, I did not mean to omit the Newton First Aid Squad for being at the five K also. Um, cause it was early, they got there, like when the volunteers were there. So um you know, we appreciate uh the two E M Ts that, that were there and uh kept us all safe. So thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
It was definitely a community event, it was great. Uh, all right, no other business? I would like a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-four? Yeah?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second you.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Kuz and a second by Councilwoman Teets, all in favor? All right, good evening, have a good night, thank you.